And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is public announcements. Absentee voting ends November 2nd. Details may be found at www.farefieldme.com. The state municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 7th, at the Community Center at 61 Water Street. Polls are open from 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The 2018 dog licensing tags will be available to the town office. Current 2017 dog licenses expire on December 31st. The Lawrence Public Library will be hosting their annual Halloween event at 33 Lawrence Avenue on Thursday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And number four, non-essential town services will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day.
I'd like to add one more thing to the Lawrence Public Library. It was set up to be, it was going to be done in a park. They're going to decorate the park and that, but because of the weather that we have ongoing, it's going to be all inside.
So they will be having that event inside the library? Our second order of business is public hearings. Public hearing this evening is to hear from the public on an application for an automobile graveyard/junkyard permit for Harry's Towing and Salvage located at 228 Norwich Walk Road. Meeting, uh, hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this?
Hi, my name's Jeff McCarron. I live at 220 Norwich Walk Road. My property abuts, both of my lots, the whole junkyard on one side. Just to give you a little history here, I'm a little, first thing, I'm a little upset that this passed the first time. And I'm supposed to be, I should have received the letter 14 to seven days before the first permit was issued. And I didn't find that out till today, to be honest. I didn't know this was a renewal till this morning. I thought this was the actual, I was very disappointed that twice we haven't been notified. And my wife, this directly affects us. It's right in my backyard. I get it, we moved there 30 years ago, but we should have been notified. It's in your ordinance, it's your rules. I'm just concerned why we weren't. It really bothered me. Uh, just to give you a little history, we moved there 30 years ago. Some of you were around when they had the cancer cluster and all the problems with the green road. When DEP was climbing all over, testing water samples everywhere. Well, they started testing my water. And lo and behold, they found some petroleum products in it. So Gordon Fuller, the agent for the DEP, says, "Well, the state's got a lot of money with what's going on out here. They'll put in a filter system for you and your family. You have two young children. Just better to be safe." Perfect. Says, "We'll test it every year. You pay to maintain it. No problem. Everything went along fine. After my filter, the water was fine." Great. Well, this summer, well, two years ago, he came up before he retired, he says, "Jeff, junkyard's slowly closing down. Things are looking good. Your water's perfect before. You're kind of wasting your money with a filter. Why don't you have them take it out?" I says, "Fine. Being the state, it took two years." This summer, they took it out. And then I find out, well, going down the road similar again, it was very disheartening to me. Um, I just need to know that now that there's a permit out there, that someone's gonna make sure that the rules in your ordinance are followed. I'm looking at some of them. I spent three nights, because I found out about this meeting Sunday night when I was on the website looking at tax maps, about something totally irrelevant. I just need to know that these rules are going to be followed 300 feet from my well. There's cars within 300 feet of my well. This is a big one that would just trump it all, would save my well, save everything. Nothing should be parked or stored within 500 feet of a resident. This, they're all there now, I mean, all but a couple. If they move 500 feet, all my problems go away. I mean, I also reading here, there's supposed to be a barrier and stuff. I planted trees, bought the trees 30 years ago. The code enforcement officer called me today. I saw this barrier. That's my barrier. And once all the leads go, it's not that good. I can deal with the barrier part. If these things are moved away from my well, I want my family and my grandkids safe. That's, that's what we're asking. We're disappointed we weren't notified, so we couldn't get this out the first time. But here we are, a year into it, and I've got, there's not a lot of cars. It's not like it used to be. It's a lot better, but, and I don't know him. I just talked to him today for the first time. Probably a great guy. That's all I'm asking, is just get these cars away from my well. I don't, I shouldn't have to look at it, and I don't want any of my water supply. So, and these are your ordinances, so I just would like to know from the council that someone will make sure the stuff is handled, and you'll never hear from me again. I want to be a good neighbor. I've never fought with Bill over all the years. I've had problems. I've talked to the town, and he was always grandfathered, so I could have got a lawyer. I just let her go. You know what? I want to be, I don't want to fight with my neighbors. All my other neighbors are here. We all get along great, and we shouldn't have to, shouldn't have to deal with that, worry about my water and the health of the family.
Absolutely.
So I say, please, would like your consideration to think of these things for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry? Yeah, I know. I understand. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I declare the public meeting.
I'm also a neighbor. My property also joins the junk, you know? And I just wanted to, you know, like, what he had said, Jeff said, uh, you know, it is a lot, there's not, nowhere near as many cars now, and, um, very, very few. I just wanted to put that out there. And, you know, myself, I'm concerned about water issues and stuff too, and, um, we don't drink the well water there. And I grew up in Fairfield Center, and I know there's a lot of water issues that don't revolve around, around this junkyard, but, um, I just wanted to put that out there too. And, um, I understand Jeff being concerned for his family and stuff like that, but I mean, I don't think there's any hazardous things going on or anything like that, so I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, I declare the public meeting closed. Our third order of business is public comments, limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is on the meeting agenda when the item is addressed. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on an upcoming item, or general?
Maybe.
Yep, on the, okay.
On what? Which item? If they pass at the time?
Okay, our fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees.
So, the invitation for Centralway Growth Council's annual meeting was emailed to all of you, plus mailed from the Growth Council. I will be sending you my RSVP tomorrow. Are there any council members that are looking to go that I can include your name with that?
All right, sent your email.
So, okay, all right. If you do, and know, because it's November 14th, just shoot me an email by tomorrow morning too, if you end up, if you need to double check your schedules. And then also, the Economic Community Development Committee met last Monday, on the 16th. They moved their meeting because of the holiday. Most of that meeting was spent discussing the possibility of doing a special meeting to review a potential credit enhancement agreement. And that meeting has been set for next Monday afternoon, should that definitely go forward to take place. So that's good. That's going to be a good process to have them involved. Their intent is to review the application with the business owner, or their representatives, and provide you with a recommendation letter going forward, so when you do need to discuss that. Also, the Technology Committee has set up its first meeting for November 2nd at 1:00 p.m. It'll be right here. Public Works Department is still focusing a majority of their time on putting up winter sand. The construction on 139 has slowed us down quite a bit this year. It's going much slower, but they're working through that. And we are not cutting through, there, there is a possibility we could cut through Martin Stream Road, but because we just had it paved, we're not allowing any of our dump trucks or any of the other towns' dump trucks that we're partnering with to go through there, so. Also, just as an update for you, the police chief is working with the Attorney General's Office, and they're creating a policy for the carry and use of intranasal naloxacone for our officers. This has been something that we have not done before in the past, because fire and EMS do provide this service, and they respond relatively quickly. However, we have had, recently, it's become overdoses are now starting to be part of the officers' routine daily calls for services. And because of that, this would allow the officers to administer while waiting for EMS to arrive. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago, where if they had been able to do that, it would have made things a lot easier. So, we're going forward with that. And so they'll be training in front of that sort of piece. And then, also, there's been very little progress at the B.R. Fields facility since your last meeting two weeks ago. As a matter of fact, they haven't even come in to sign the new lease extension that we provided to them. That was stated to be up for today. I do believe the problem is still focusing around a crane. We're trying to be in touch with them, but there really hasn't been anybody around to see what's going on. So, you'll have an update at your next meeting, but I know everybody's concern was to make sure that the facility is removed by snowfall. So we may have to bring, hopefully we do not, but as a last resort, we would have to bring the attorneys back in, so. But, we're still working on it. And that's it.
Our fifth order of business is to waive the reading of, uh, waive the reading of and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting number 20-17, held on October 17th, October 11th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Who carries? Our sixth order of business is the treasurer's warrant. To approve the treasurer's warrant, number 24, in the amount of $1,092,409.60, and warrant T3, in the amount of $600.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Our seventh order of business is to take action on the following items. Order the town council hereby approve an application for an automobile graveyard/junkyard permit for Harry's Towing and Salvage located at 228 Norwich Walk Road. I move that this is tabled to allow for a continued application review in accordance with updated state statutes.
My second.
I would, uh, would just like to inquire, say, we heard from the abutter, they may not have received seven days' notice as well. I just wanted to ask whether that notice was actually mailed in accordance with the ordinance?
It was not.
Okay.
So, there have been quite a few things that have been brought to our attention in the last 24 hours. We have been in contact with the applicant, as well as some of the abutters, and are working to correct those issues and get that fixed going forward.
I, I would also say, having read through our ordinance in preparation for today, that ordinance is in serious need of technical revision to make it, I would say, even passively readable.
So, the ordinance has also been delivered to the town clerk and the code enforcement officer for review, for revision, for an upcoming council meeting. That was also taken care of today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Along with the corresponding applications for the checklist of all the new requirements that some of us weren't aware of.
Will there be a second public hearing on this once the notices have been mailed up?
The way the process would have to, what will end up happening is that the process will inevitably have to start over, and there will be a second public hearing after notification has been sent to the abutters, as well as some various state organizations, so. Everybody will be made aware of what will happen as we go forward, and that should be worked out within the next 24 to 48 hours.
I told you I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Who carries? It has been tabled. Item 17-93, order that the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign an agreement with MSAD 49 for the 2017-2018 plowing services to include certificate of insurance, name of the town of Fairfield, as additionally insured by MSAD 49.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion? Why am I not seeing my?
Keep going, it's running down. It's, it's running behind all your...
Yeah, it's right there. I was reading this at home. It states in here that we will discontinue after May 31st, 2018.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Which should cover us until all snow is done. And this was done with the understanding that, you know, if it snows tomorrow, we're going to be there tomorrow. If it snows on June 1st, we're going to cover it on June 1st. But the attorney suggested that dates actually be put in there. It can always be extended.
Yes.
Is the intention then that we're going to reach a more permanent arrangement with the school district at some point?
That would be up to the council. When this was given to the attorney, the response was that the town was going to disregard the law for this one year and try to put this together. So if you want to continue to do that, then we would have to do something even longer going forward.
Okay, because what John had read at the last meeting, there was a caveat in there that permitted it to be done under certain circumstances?
With a cost-sharing approach, so that it decreased costs for both entities.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why the, the use of the fuel is being put in here, so that it shows that they're providing us also a service. However, it's not necessarily always the cheapest aspect for us. In fact, actually, we can purchase from DOT cheaper. Last year, the school locked into such a price that it was cheaper to buy it at local gas stations than it was from the school, because they are subject to whatever they lock into in the system. So that's why this says that we may purchase fuel, but not that, that we will do it permanently. So what, when I sent this to the superintendent, included in my email was a suggestion that we work on a separate, two separate agreements, actually. One, for the use of the fuel station, and two, where the school purchases sand from us, from our stockpile, a separate agreement for that as well, so that we would continue to be able to work on both of those services. But that we would not continue to plow going forward afterwards. The school has the equipment, that, well, they currently plow the junior high parking lot, just not the high school parking lot, the teachers parking lot, or these access roads. There's another small little access road that they do plow. But this would allow for them to work through the budget process for this year, and then be able to budget accordingly for them to plow in the future.
Okay, I was, I guess I, I was under the impression that we were going to be working on a contract with the school to provide...
So even your minutes of the last meeting said something about for this year, to work on a project for this year, so that they would not be kept in the works.
Right, for this year.
For this year, work on something, but then, going forward from here.
So, you would be looking for something such that we provided the service and they paid us for that?
Some cost-sharing agreement with them going forward from this plow. We're taking care of this plowing season for whatever, whatever we have to do to make sure that things are taken care of.
So a cost share for that.
Yeah, my understanding is they don't have the equipment to...
To do those big parking lots.
So, so to do that with MSAD 49, I caution you with the fact that you would also potentially be looking to do that for the charter school of Goodwill Henley, to be able to provide the same service.
If we entered into a contract with them?
Them.
Should we enter into a contract with them? We're not obligated to enter into a contract with them.
Correct.
Right.
So we can do, work on an agreement for next winter going forward?
Yes.
If that's what you'd like to see.
I would like to, yes. I mean, regardless, if they're going to need a bucket loader to move mountains of snow, you know, you're looking, I mean, what's a bucket loader cost? Is it half a million dollars?
I don't know. Probably more, actually.
It's not cheap, in that way.
But I think they have one.
Do they have a bucket loader?
That's how they get the sand at the school, uh, from our stockpile.
They do get it, yeah.
Yeah. Plus, they clean up their bus garage, and all the other schools. This is the only municipality in which the municipality plows any school property in this district.
Plows a portion of it.
Yeah. All the other towns plow. I mean, all the other towns, Benton, Clinton, and Albion, the school district provides that service.
Okay. But, uh, after this season, we should look at a contract that is equitable for both parties going forward.
We could do that.
So, as for the matter of plowing for this year, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Item 17-94, order that the town council hereby authorize the town manager to set a minimum amount and facilitate sale of a 2010 Crown Vic to be put out to bid, utilized as a trade-in or sold with determination to be made by the town manager.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing...
Just for clarification, this is the old code enforcement car?
Yes.
Just so everybody is aware.
Okay. No discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Who carries? Okay, moving on to our eighth order of business. Council workshop and other business. Number one, discuss PERC opt-out option.
So, every municipality that is not going to renew their contract with PERC, starting April 1, 2018, is required by December 15th of 2017 to let them know officially, so that we can receive our equity share, which is...
Our reduced equity share.
Yeah. It's $24,012.14. That will come back to the municipality as part of our capital investment in PERC over the years.
Did they move the decimal point back one place from where it originally was?
So this all stems from that lawsuit? That the town signed on with, the MRC with, back, was it 15, 16, 2016, something? No, had to have been 14 or 15, because it was prior to when I arrived. And this all comes from that. So that's what the court settled on, as to what the number needed to be. If we don't go through this opt-out option, this put option, it will be up to the municipality to negotiate on its own behalf as to what our benefits would be if this comes from the MRC negotiations. So we could opt not to take this, and then try to go it alone, and see if you could get anywhere near as much, or take the 24. I could definitely speak to our MRC rep and get back to you at your next meeting with more information.
That would be very helpful. Um, maybe a, um, call to Mr. Lee to find out if there's any, if there's any feasibility to it. I'm sure he's done it.
Yeah, so I know that Waterville and Wentzlow are both pulling out as well.
Right.
And Mike Roy, Waterville City Manager, is actually our area's rep. We've had conversations about this, and everybody's quite surprised we broke into this, but I haven't heard that, I don't, nobody has opted to go out on their own yet, so there's no results as to what that would be, because of course, that doesn't trigger until after the December piece. But I could definitely get some more information.
If you can get some more information on that, that would be good, and that's... We have a couple of options, but we don't have all the information on the other option.
And we'll have it for you before your next meeting, so that you will have that information to review. Because you have the fact that you're not doing a second meeting in November, we will need to make a decision at your next meeting on 8.
Yep, absolutely.
It comes down to a bird in the hand or a bush.
So, for the action item for November 8.
Okay, number two, discuss waste management agreement. Kind of falling hand in hand here.
Did you go hand in hand? And this is actually the same agreement that you were giving many, many months ago. It has not changed, all of the, everything is still the same. But we hadn't taken any action on it.
Right.
It got pushed to the back for a minute, because there wasn't really a crunch time. So since we were dealing with the PERC piece, it just seemed a reason that we might as well just deal with the other piece at the same exact time. So I gave you this to review it again, so it was more fresh, so that it could be put on as an action item at your next meeting to go forward. If you remember, back in the beginning, when this was done, there were some issues with some of the things we had in the original version of the contract we received. One, there was some concerns about it only being for a two-year period. However, we did add another section that says that the parties will meet one year after the effective date, on or about April 1, 2019, to renegotiate length of term unless sooner terminated by either. And the biggest reason for it only being a two-year contract, as we worked through this with waste management, was the fact that the town of Fairfield situation is very unique. Waste Management's back gate transfer station is going to currently collect tickets for any municipality, and then submit them, and then to get reimbursed for that. So not knowing how that process was going to impact their back gate piece, they wanted to know that they had time to come back and re-discuss this. So they were fine with the one year. The two years was just, they wanted to... The two years was just, they wanted to know that the municipality had some stability, but they wanted to be able to evaluate, so that we said we could do it one year easily enough and then we'd know that we could be extended or whether we were looking at other options after the first year instead of the two years. So there was that piece. And then there was also another piece in here where it was worded that folks who have bulky waste, such as, you know, if you have to throw away a couch or mattress and box framing or refriger, you know, those sort of pieces. Originally, it was written such that there was a per-ton minimum price of eighty-five, eighty-five per ton. And that language has since been clarified, so that there is a ton price of eighty-five, eighty-five. But folks with bulky waste will use the front gate at Waste Management, so they'll go across the scales. That waste will be weighed, and then when you come out, you know, they'll weigh you again and therefore you'll just pay whatever that portion is of a ton, so, and that was, that was good.
Very good.
So and all of our local haulers are still in support of us going with Waste Management and continuing this agreement, so.
Very good.
Yeah, they were. They were pretty much in agreement.
Yeah.
They would actually prefer to be able to go there now.
Yes. Any other questions, comments, concerns, statements? Okay. Okay, number three, discuss peg station asset retention. We have a.
So this came up, if you've been out in the hallway, you'll see the little bits and pieces left over from the server when we upgraded it. The components that were good were used as a trade-in. But there are some pieces out there, as well as, it had come up recently regarding our videos and what we had for various pieces. And then, of course, articles of retention, which are, you know, main state archives sets up, but they don't really have anything regarding DVDs created by local access stations. My guess is that that's governed by federal laws or those pieces, I'm not really sure. But also with regards to equipment, unless it's something specific, it's the council that has to say town equipment and how that's disposed of. So we'd like to be able to dispose of that in an appropriate manner, but need your permission in order to do so. I do know, I had requested a copy of their archive policy, which I just got the C-Wing, but Laura is here and she can probably tell you a little bit more about that. It just so happens I do.
Do I have to sign the sign-in sheet?
You do not.
What would you like? You don't have, you don't have a copy of it?
We do not have a copy of that, so if you could please give us a, an overview of that, please?
My board of directors reviewed the archive policy that we had that was adopted back in two thousand three. And we, they've come to the conclusion that we're going to save all the governmental meetings from all the towns that we cover. The school board meetings, the sports, Katon Beck Valley Forum, Public Interest, Historical Society. Basically, the only thing we're not going to keep are the church services. And other than Notre Dame, those are brought to me anyway, so I don't think that we need to retain them. And what we're going to do is we're going to store this media on DVDs for two years. And then we're going to transfer each one to, to the external hard drive for permanent storage. So they'll be here forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So some other information that I received today regarding this, just because we're on the station. Our television's channel is being moved. Charter Communications is moving all of their public access and educational access channels. And the reason I know this is because it also came out on the manager's list of a couple of days ago. Where some other stations that are being moved, but we are, Charter Communications is moving channel seven to channel thirteen oh one and channel eleven to thirteen oh two. Evidently, they're currently already there. This is because of the digital upgrades that were done. There are a substantial number of channels that are actually moving, but these ones pertain to us directly. I did speak with the government reps office at Charter Communications today, whether or not there was anything we could do to get that station stated the number that it was at. I was not made aware of anything that could be done. And, but however, it was reinforced that these channels, these thirteen oh one and thirteen oh two, are still part of the basic tier of services, which is what their requirement is for these access pieces. So it does still fit within the basic tier. So anybody who currently has access to the sta, will continue to have access to the station and its broadcasting. It'll just be at a different number. They are going to be sending Laura some, Shelley said that she would send Laura some informational programming that she can put out. She's sending it out to some of the other stations too, they're putting it together, so that we can start letting our viewers know. But it will take place on December fifth, two thousand seventeen.
So there, you can watch it on thirteen oh one to thirteen oh two right now?
That's what she said. I'm going to check it when I go home.
I have to check it here. I can, when we're done, I can go check it.
Okay.
She said it's already available at those two locations.
Out of curiosity, has Charter mentioned at all wanting to negotiate our franchise agreement?
Not today.
Okay.
No. I had mentioned to her that, you know, we, they are, the government rep, Shelley Richenbach, is aware of our technology committee and things that we're working on with this. And we have discussed the franchise agreement and knew that we probably would want to have a couple of those technology committee meetings before we renegotiated because there has been some conversation. We can request up to three channels as opposed to having just the one. So we'll see.
We have two?
Well, technically, we have two, but not really. Because from what I've gathered, our programming is the same on either one, depending on which one we're looking at.
So you can look at seven or all?
No. Fairfield is channel eleven only.
Eleven only.
Fairfield only. Everyone else is on channel seven.
Channel seven.
We, we actually could have three channels in all of our.
Viewing areas.
Viewing areas. And they could all run different programming. Theoretically possible and contractually, they're actually obligated to provide it if we ask for it.
Right. So, because you would have one for the public, basically the way they listed out is that you could have a specific channel, one for the public, one for governmental, and one for, well, educational and then governmental, that's where peg stems from. So we could be working on that to get the town three stations instead of just one.
So one for public, one for educational, and one for government.
Yep.
Channels, not stations.
Right, channels.
Channels.
Right, so that you could broadcast three different programs at the same exact time.
I don't think DirecTV has, has that, because I've never seen it.
No, it's only on cable.
No, it's only on cable. It's not, not anybody who has satellite.
And I looked for it and I said, I, I guess they don't do that, so.
So, and then, of course, prior to this conversation, I had sent you a memo regarding the fact that there, last week, two weeks ago, there was some conversation regarding the station's ownership. And so I had asked that anything that CATV had regarding station ownership be sent to us so that it was here for this meeting this evening. Which what we did receive was their letters of incorporation. So that Central Main Community Access Television as an entity was created and it was created for the purpose of furnishing programming. But it doesn't provide for ownership. So the town is the one, based upon our franchise agreement, that is the one that is in charge of the station, which is when, the, the reason this archive policy came forward was to make sure that we were disposing of things in the appropriate manner. So that if they belong to the town, they needed to be done through the council as opposed to just going through the CATV board. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Now, what is the, what is the question on proof of owner, what is the question on ownership?
So it's a good question.
What's the discrepancy on ownership?
Do you want me to answer that?
By all means.
My, my understanding is that when local access station was established here in Fairfield, this coun, well, not this particular council, but the governing body, which is the council, appointed four members to the board of directors to take care of Central Main, well, CATV, whatever it was back then.
Yes.
And so when the council appointed that board, that board was governed, or given the authority to, to establish articles of incorporation, hire a station manager, appoint, well, the different committees, but you can't do different committees until you have other entities, other municipalities in with the, the town of Fairfield. But my understanding is that it was established, this, this organization was established for the purpose of managing this TV station.
Yes. They were established to manage this TV station.
That's right.
Correct.
But.
They do not own it.
I don't, we don't own the station.
You don't?
All I'm saying is that we have a board of directors that governs this organization. I report to that, that body. We make decisions. And if need be, we will bring it to the council, but up to this point, we have been operating on our own for ten years.
Yes.
The only time, the only money that we've ever got from the town to indicate that it had any interest, and it really wasn't an interest because it was required of the municipality to put its financial, its franchise fees toward the station's operations and administration. That was fine, that was working well until, I don't know, two thousand twelve? I'm trying to think when CSAC was on the board, on the council. Anyway, at that time, when the negotiations were starting with the lawsuit between Time Warner and the town of Fairfield for franchise fees that should have been paid and weren't, this council forced my board, and I literally mean forced my board, to amend the bylaws so that the council could set the amount of money that would go to the station from the franchise fees received from Time Warner. That's when it started being assigned the fifteen thousand each year. This year, we're going to get twenty thousand regardless of how much money was going to be coming in from franchise fees. That was done so that the town could control the amount of money from that franchise amount that would come to the station. That's the only thing we've ever gotten from the town. I've given Michelle a profit loss over there. And in just three months alone, the station has brought in over what it received in franchise money from the town. So if you want, if the town feels that it owns the station, the only thing that the town owns of this station is the server that it just purchased for the station this summer.
And the, and the channel.
Everything else.
And the, the channels from Time Warner or Charter.
What do you mean?
The channels are given to the town of Fairfield to use.
Which has been passed over to this board of directors by the council.
We, we can't pass that over.
The channels?
No, we can't. You are a subcontractor to the town.
That's right. We, we are managing this station for the town of Fairfield.
Correct.
Because right now, the town of Fairfield is the only municipality that belongs to this board of directors. We broadcast out to nine communities, including Fairfield.
Right.
Once those municipalities are approached and they start to decide that they want to come in, then what's going to happen? Who owns the station? It is not the town of Fairfield, it is the member municipalities that own the station.
It, am I incorrect in my understanding that any town can have a channel from?
That's correct.
So Waterville could have their own channels?
That is correct.
So Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, whomever would be using Fairfield's channel?
No. No, they'd have their own channel seven or channel eleven, whatever they want to use for the local access. But the broadcast from this station would be blacked out from, for instance, the city of Waterville. They would not, we would not broadcast to the city of Waterville's subscribers.
So they wouldn't have channel, say, thirteen oh three or something?
They would have the same thing, but what we broadcast would be blocked out. And the city of Waterville would be assigned, no, let me rephrase that. Right, thirteen oh one and thirteen oh two would not be broadcast in the city of Waterville. The city of Waterville would be assigned another separate channel.
Altogether.
Altogether.
Okay. So as long as it's a collaborative approach and they are using our appointed channels, then they can view them in their town.
That's correct, but they are not member municipalities to this.
At this point.
Organization.
Correct.
When that happens, and I'm sure it's going to, the town of Fairfield will be blacked out of every town that, that picks up its own station. It would be sitting here all by itself. I don't think you want that to happen.
I'm not aware of any organization where it operates like that. So I live in Clinton and.
Clinton could have its own station.
If I was sitting at home right now, I would be watching our.
Clinton can watch our.
Right now?
Yes.
But if, if the town of Clinton decides that it wants to have its own local access station, the town of Fairfield would be blacked out to the people in Clinton.
That's assuming that, that Charter actually blacks it out, which is, is a, on the one hand, is actually, has been a serious problem for us, is that Charter has been unwilling to give us the technological ability to restrict, restrict broadcast.
That's how, that's how it's supposed to work. It's supposed to be governed by this board trustee, board of directors, whatever you want to call them, to govern, and as these member municipalities come in, they appoint their own members to this board, up to, I believe, four members. That's how it grows. It is governed by this board. It is not governed by the town of Fairfield. Town of Fairfield has given that responsibility to this board of directors.
To manage it, yes.
That's right. Well, to me, in order to manage it, you have to have control of it. How am I supposed to manage a station that I don't have control of?
Well, you're not owning it. Fairfield owns the channels.
If the town, let me put it to you this way, Michael. If the town wants to take over the station and assume the financial responsibility of the station, which would mean that the town of Fairfield would have to come up with about fifty to sixty thousand dollars to maintain the station at the level it's at right now. I don't see that happening, do you?
That is why we contracted it out to a private entity. Right, we have contracted it out.
We don't have a contract yet, but that's, would think that that would be the first step for us to take.
Absolutely.
If you want to have a contract. We have contracts with the other organizations that work with us. Then let's work on a contract with the town of Fairfield and we'll outline what you will get the services from the station.
I think that that would be a good, a good start to things.
I do too.
To have the, in writing, black and white, so somebody can look at that ten years from now and say, this is how it was designed, set up, and supposed to commence forward from here.
Yeah.
Is there any other issue that needs to be broached that has not been?
No, the only other thing that came up in all of this too is the insurance. So we need proof of your workers' comp insurance and your personal liability insurance.
I don't need personal liability insurance, Michelle. What are you talking about?
So organizations that we contract with have liability insurance. They name us additionally insured and.
Letting over the SA forty-nine. Let me know whether that's A D forty-nine.
Correct.
Right.
This, this station does not have insurance, liability insurance, we have workers' comp. We have unemployment insurance. I don't have any liability insurance.
Someone was to knock over and break a camera, nothing's covered by insurance.
No.
So, you're going to need to have insurance because of the fact that you're in a municipal building? Um, you'll have to have that, as a separate entity, you have to have insurance.
Then we'll, then we'll do what we have to do, but that's how I feel about it.
So I wasn't aware that you guys didn't have insurance, I knew you didn't have copies of it, but I wasn't aware that you didn't have it. So you should have insurance, especially where you're sending folks out to do video coverage and that kind of stuff. You should definitely have insurance, so that you can be covered.
I understand that, but you don't.
So, yeah.
Yes, you have a question?
I'm just wondering where the money is going to come from, is the town going to pay for that? Since they are resuming responsibility for the station itself, to make it run, and that's something that it needs to run, correct?
That's what the entity needs in order to function, so CATV themselves is a separate entity, needs to have that. So the town already pays for the community center, all of its utilities, the internet, the phone, heat, electricity, all of that, we already cover all of those pieces, but because Central Maine Television, C-A-T-V, is a separate entity, that they are required to provide the insurance, workers' comp, all of those pieces, that entity itself would have to have that.
Let me ask you a question, may I, why, why do you get to pick and choose what the station, when the station becomes itself, I mean, and not?
I believe this was oversight from previous councils, that they did not require this. I was under the impression that these were already being provided by CATV, since they are a separate entity. I had no reason to believe that they weren't already providing insurance, that they didn't have liability insurance on this equipment.
When, when we went and had the papers drawn up, the articles, and had the bylaws authorized and everything else, we asked everything that we had to do, and there was never any mention of having to have personal liability insurance down here, for us.
I mean, it does seem odd, I mean, we've got rather expensive equipment in there that if it gets broken.
That, if you own the station, then you should, the town, should have to come up with that insurance, that's what I'm saying. One side can say you own the, the equipment of the station, and the other side, when there's something that needs to be taken care of, we're the badasses.
Well, the, the big issue, honestly, the equipment may very well be covered by, by the town's insurance. You falling and breaking, uh, breaking an arm might be covered by workers' comp, but what is definitely not is if you hire a contractor, which from my experience on the board, I know you do regularly.
Yep.
And they get injured using either some equipment, which you are claiming is the station, such as a camera or tripod, they trip over it and break a leg. They're not insured. You're not covered by our MMA policy.
I'm not disagreeing that we need to have it there, I'm just saying that when we ask, everything that needs to be done.
But we can't buy, we can't buy insurance for your business, I, I, I don't know why you were never told that a business needs insurance, but it does.
The history of the station, you should know. Uh, I, I don't mean that sarcastically, I mean that real, really.
But all of our contractors, whatever service they provide to us, we assume that they know how to run their business. As a government, we don't tell them how to run the business, what we do is we tell them, please do the following services for us. And I agree with your earlier exchange, we should have a contract that spells out what those services are, but we have to assume that our contractors are competent to.
If we have a contract with you, then perhaps we would worry about that, but we don't have a contract with you.
But you as a business entity, and I'm just going to say this is a, really not really much of a town's interest, I guess, other than we don't need the headache of it, as a business entity, you should want to be insured.
Okay.
Because you do work that isn't involving us, and we're not going to cover that when something goes wrong.
Okay, I, I, I'm fine with that, I just want to know who owns what, who does what, and whose responsibility is it? I mean, I have been working very, very hard to bring this station up to where it is today. You people should be very proud of what you have for a station, you're the only one in this area that has a station that is as busy and as active as this one is. I've been meeting with them, trust me. You should be very proud of what you have, what I want to know is, whose responsibility is it? Do we have to go to the town of Fairfield every time we want to do something? No.
No?
Well.
You are managing the station.
That's right.
Yes.
But if I can't manage it, I, for instance, Michelle is setting up this committee over here out of the guise of the town of Fairfield. How does that play into the station that we manage, CATV?
Are you a part of that company?
I am a part of that committee.
Okay.
That's only met once, but nevertheless.
Then you will be fully informed on where that is going to go and what will transpire from it. It's not going to be hidden, it's not going to be in the shadows, it is going to be right out front in the open, and you will be a part of it. Whether it goes anywhere or not, it may fall flat, it may take off. We don't know, that's why we are having these meetings, that's why you are a part of it.
I understand that.
Are we part, would this fall under the guise of, of?
P three or private public partnership?
I, I mean, I didn't.
I'm thinking that's where it would be.
Even my, even my experience before I was on the council, as a board member of CATV, I mean, and having previously served as the board president, my understanding was always that this was a public partnership with a private entity to manage a public resource.
Right.
And so I, I mean, I do think that we are, th- this is, in my, in my mind, this is not terribly different than, say for instance, the arrangement we are currently making with waste management, we have, we have a, a public concern. We are contracting with a private entity to handle that public concern, but ultimately, it is an area where, within the bounds of our contractual understanding, we, we ultimately bear the responsibility for managing that public resource, we're just deciding in expedient means to do that.
Right, with a public-private partnership, then that's what works. So, we need a, we need a contract written up which spells out what happens, where for, who owns what, who does what, who's responsible for what, to go forward. Is that something that can be?
If that's something that CATV wants to do, that's sort of why, I think that might have been what they.
The council, the council wants.
Yeah.
That.
I think that's what those, you know, the, the creation of that committee, I think, was done to address that, but it was so many years ago, it just didn't cover everything, you know, as things change, so certainly can.
The dynamics have changed over the years, and we need to.
I think we're all going to get along in dealing with this issue a lot better if we have a common set of expectations, and an expectation that we're going to review those expectations on a periodic basis.
Yeah.
Uh, that, you know, things like how we allocate franchise fees, how we afford whatever, these things don't just fester until somebody gets mad about them, that we actually sit down and say, we're going to deliberately decide what's in our common interests, and we're going to deliberately choose to come back and talk about that every so often.
I think we can make that work.
We will have something drawn up that should be amenable to both.
Okay.
Is there anything else on here that needs to be addressed at this time?
Wouldn't it be more sense if the CATV was, was doing the contract and presenting it to the council?
Absolutely.
Well, better than it come from the town manager.
Absolutely, if you folks want to write up a contract and submit that to the council, we would be very happy to look at that.
I think you mentioned, didn't you, that you have one with the other entities that you contact with anyway?
We have service agreements with the cities and towns that we do, so, that outlines what we.
That should get started anyway.
That should be a, that should be a good boiler per, plate to start off from, and.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
With, with just the caveat to include where the other towns aren't housing the actual station, could you address the fact that you're, you're building?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, there'll be lots of other things that, but, yeah, but that'll at least get them started, so.
Yeah, there will be some unkind, and there will be some monetary, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting that up. Is there anything else that needs to be addressed on this particular issue before we move on? No? Okay, moving on. Discuss the proposed climate change resolution.
Um, I, I was actually, uh, last time I, I had indicated that, uh, there was a informational session that Peter Garrett was trying to put together with the Waterville Council on this issue. That hasn't happened in the last, uh, two weeks. I've been in contact with, uh, Mr. Garrett and, uh, some other, uh, Fairfield residents, actually, who are, uh, were interested in this issue. Essentially, I, I think that if we are going to discuss this, we should first of all discuss it with the full council, because it's a symbolic resolution, and I doubt very strongly we want to pass without, uh, a consensus, uh, which is something I've expressed to, uh, to the supporters of this resolution that I've spoken to. But also, I personally am very interested in seeing what the, what information, uh, is going to be presented at this presentation. If it's a local, or a, a regional, uh, attempt at, at some sort of, uh, consensus on this issue, I think it makes sense that we, uh, that we wait, uh, until everybody's heard the full pitch, and then, uh, that we act either altogether, or, or see what, how we feel after we, uh, get the information. Obviously, there's some information that was attached to the council packet, um, but, uh, Mr. Garrett was, uh, pretty clear that he was hoping to put together an in-person, uh, event, uh, and so I would like to, uh, suggest that we keep it on the radar, but, uh, I'll, I'll be sure to keep people updated if I hear from them as to when that event's going to be.
I was hoping we were going to have a date by this meeting, so that would be part of your discussion, but I haven't seen it.
I'm going to reach out to him about that, um, I have been, uh, contacted by, uh, I believe at this point, uh, two other Fairfield residents who have also, uh, expressed, uh, support for this. Uh, I haven't heard from anybody not expressing support for it, but I'm sure that there are a wide variety of opinions on the issue, and I would welcome, I would welcome comments on it, it's a very important, uh, important thing for us to know what people feel about it.
Absolutely. So, while we wait for additional information on that one, uh, the discussion of other council business. Beverly?
No, nothing.
John?
No.
Aaron?
Nothing additional.
I did, I will say that, briefly that, I'm sorry.
You, you passed up your own.
I already deleted your name.
I hope so. I was just going to say that we did do some work on Monday, uh, and set rank choice voting off till twenty twenty-one, which case, it will come back as a constitutional.
Yeah, we have to amend the constitution before.
Type of situation, and the whole thing, and, and we, uh, again, just an overall thing, from an equipment standpoint and everything else in Maine, and, and actually, we would be the only state, the first state in the union to.
To adopt rank.
Adopt this, so.
Rank choice. Be interesting.
No, really.
I, I, I would say, however, we're not anywhere close to the first state in the union to require that somebody, uh, do runoffs if they don't get fifty percent.
Well, they, they're, where, where states are covering that, if there's, uh, you know, in specific elections, they have to win by fifty percent. If they don't, they take the, the two people that, the two top scores, and they have a runoff.
Excellent. And, anything additional, John?
No, that's.
Okay, good, thank you.
The, the marijuana thing, uh, has gone to the governor, I will bring that up too. Uh, the biggest thing, I think, for our, from our standpoint on the marijuana thing, is, is that the way that the law went to the governor on is that towns have to opt in instead of opt out. So in other words, uh, if our town does not want anything to do with marijuana being sold, or social clubs or anything else, we don't have to do anything, because if we're already out, we'd have to vote to opt in in order to bring it into town.
Oh, okay.
I actually have a question about that.
Yes.
Um, so we have a land use ordinance that regulates controlled substance facilities that includes marijuana dispensaries, grow operations, et cetera. My question on that is, since our current land use ordinance pre-cently contemplated marijuana businesses, uh, then have we opted in by creating a land use ordinance that already regulates where those things can be?
I don't believe so. I don't, I do not, the way that, the way that it has gone in, I do not believe so, but, uh, that just gives us an ordinance in case we do opt in.
But how do we opt in, I mean, we, we, we could, say we, we said nothing about it, obviously, we wouldn't have opted in, but if we created it and we said, look, we expect fully that this is going to be.
Well, it's, I mean.
Legal, here's where you can do it, haven't we said that?
We've got, we've got the rules for medical marijuana, but it's a s- split, it's two different entities altogether.
So is it, so what I'm understanding is it's opting in.
Accepting it, right.
To not have it?
No, opting in to, accepting it, to allowing it to have social clubs, or whatever, you know, whatever our ordinances want to be.
Okay, so have we by default opted in, or we have to actually?
Or out.
I don't know.
Right.
So.
Everybody is.
The regulations haven't actually come out yet as to what all the pieces are to follow. Um, it sounds like it's going to follow, um, like what alcohol is now, so a town is dry unless it actually votes to not be dry. So, it, it's what it sounds like, is it's mirroring the process now in order to be able to sell liquor.
Okay.
And, you know, or beer, wine, or spirits in municipalities, it's, is what it's sounding like. But we haven't actually seen how it's going to be structured, I haven't, I haven't seen how that'll all work yet. But it is a very good question, what that Aaron raises, um, does that automatically put you in, I don't.
No.
I can't answer that, I have no idea, but it, it will be the question that will be asked once everything starts coming forward, and.
I think once we, once we get a, uh, we get the final rules, and assuming that this bill actually gets signed, which I've heard is, uh, not, not strictly a, a fait accompli, that, uh, that we, we should probably find out what, if anything, our current land use ordinance, uh, means under that, uh, under that rubric.
So knowing that this was coming when we revised that land use ordinance, there were some pieces that they did take into consideration, so they were written broadly, but I'm. And they were, if you remember, back when the law passed last year, you sent it to the planning board to start working on regulation changes or amendments that needed to be made to our land use ordinance if we needed to, instead of opting in to do a moratorium, which at this point, based upon the timing, was probably good, because your moratorium would be about to expire, including its extension, and we still don't have a lot that's active, so it's good that we didn't actually go forward with that step at that time, and you still have that option should you need to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would look at that, I would look at that land use stuff as, as an example of just sitting down and saying, okay, there's a land use stuff, if we decide to opt in, uh.
Right, there are lots.
We've already got laws in fit, enforced, but if we don't opt in, those laws just sit there.
There are lots of folks, uh, the code enforcement officer, the assessor, myself, uh, the police chief, there are lots of us that are watching how this is evolving every day, so.
And I'm aging fifteen times before.
It could change a lot. So we're kind of in a hold, hold pattern at the moment to find out where this ends up at.
Where we are.
Yeah. And then we can figure out.
Cause there's, there's a lot of other problems there too, not getting into a lot of, uh, uh, hash, no pun intended, is the, uh, aspect that federal banks and credit unions cannot accept money from marijuana people, anything to do with marijuana, because it's drugs and it's federally illegal, so they can't accept any money, uh, from that. There's a lot of different, uh, different levels of things that crop up there.
Well, we'll have to see where this all comes down, and what the legal ramifications are for the.
Yep.
Town of Fairfield.
We'll have to wait and see.
All right.
Yep.
So.
It's on my calendar already, but.
The next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, November eighth, twenty seventeen.
And that's the only one for that month.
That is correct, that is the only meeting that we will be having in the month of November unless an emergency should arise. And at this time, we will, uh, have a short recess to sign documents, and then we will be having our executive session.
So.
Second. We are in recess.